Order, today is April 22nd at 7:00 PM. Court Konecki, would you call the votes please?
Trustee Iello, trustee Salala.
Here.
Trustee Kazoan.
Here.
Trustee Case.
Here.
Trustee Tucker.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
President Volpus.
Here. Let's all rise for the pledge and then man for the pledge. Trustee Wagner will have a short prayer for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose name we stand.
Please remain standing for trustee Wagner's prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the residents, staff, businesses, surrounding communities, and all those that enter the Village of Villa Park. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, the next item is public comments on agenda items. Court Konecki, did anyone sign up?
Yes, agenda items, yes. Thank you.
Agenda items five through eight F.
Yes.
Okay.
Wendy Grandre wants to address 7A.
Okay.
My comment for 7A was, if I'm being very curious, that January 14th, if I believe, there was a vote taken to purchase property at 631 East Wildwood Avenue. And at that meeting, we were told that it was going to be used for housing vehicles at the village yet, in public record. And now, all of a sudden, that property is listed as the future home of J.K. Mulch. I'm just curious why that information couldn't be brought to the public before this.
During negotiation with A.K. Mulch at that time, we didn't know where they were going to wind up, even if they were really interested in that pocket of AT&amp;T property at that point. So we were planning on moving our equipment over there and then see what, getting rid of some of the properties on Home Avenue. So, things were all in flux, so we didn't want to ruin any deal that we might have with AT&amp;T.
Okay. I have a question for another agenda item. Can I move to that next agenda item and then I will be done on my agenda items? My last question on the agenda is regarding AF, the resolution to renew the village manager's employment contract. I understand he's gone from 172 to something like that, to about 175, which is a 2.5% increase, which is probably the norm. I would like to know what the other terms of the contract are and what the process for review is for his performance. As a public employee, there should be record and some type of review document that goes into place.
Well, the review was done in the executive session, which we're allowed to do in our executive session where we have employee issues. So we did it, the trustees did it in the executive session where we reviewed his performance.
Where is his actual contract?
I believe the contract was on the website.
It is on the website, which is kind of hard to get to on the web. Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Okay. I also have Christine Murphy regarding the same item, 7A.
Okay.
Hello.
Give me.
I'm trustee Alexis D. Murphy from 123 Southdale Avenue. And I have a question regarding 7A as well, and the purchase amount of $2.2 million for the properties. Do we have public access to three real estate comparative market analyses that validate the cost of that real estate? And if not, what data was used to make the determination of $2.2 million?
We had a couple appraised valuations of that property.
Do we have access to these now?
Um, there should be.
Mm-hmm.
There should be. So I don't know exactly right now where they are. They're not on the website.
No.
No. So you can throw them if you'd like.
Okay, perfect. And it did show that the validation of $2.2 million wasn't appropriate for this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
The 2.2 involves the businesses.
Yeah. The 2.2 involves the businesses that are on the corner, the Dog Boomer and the Cherokee Rose. Any more?
Yes, one more person, Angie Rojek, regarding 7A.
Hi, I'm Angie Rojek. I own Pioneer Garden Feed. I wanted to talk about buying A.K. Mulch. I know that this is part of it is helping with the parking problems that we've been having, so I want to thank you for doing that. My question though is what the plan is for the property, and I'm sure that's going to be part of your discussion, I just want to make sure that's part of the discussion. Because that can't all be for parking. So I just wanted to see what the ultimate plan is for it, and then ultimately then what the plan for Villa Avenue is. What do you want it to look like? Do you want it to be retail and restaurants? Why did an office building go in when you're trying to make it like a walkable downtown? I kind of just wanted to see if that was part of the discussion of the purchase.
Which office building?
123.
Oh, 123.
Across, yeah.
Okay.
So, anyway, thank you.
Well, the plan on that is, originally is for parking, because we have a parking problem there. But I'm free to tell you, we have had developers interested in buying a stretch along Villa Avenue, but there's nothing, nothing really has gone beyond just some inquiries.
Okay. Oh, I guess I should say, sorry, I shouldn't have said that. So just if developers buy it, just make sure there's no parking.
And if you do, after so many years, when those leases are up on those businesses, that, you know, gives you even more space for parking.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else sign up?
I'm Angie's the last person.
Anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Okay. With that, we'll move on to amendments to the agenda. Do any of the board members have any amendments? Saying none. We move on to 5A, which is the proclamation recognizing municipal clerks' week. Whereas the office of municipal clerk is a time honored and vital part of local government, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants providing the professional link between citizens, local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the office, of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, country, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. I therefore, Albert Volpus, president of Villa Park, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Joseana Konecki, and to all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent this 22nd of April, 2019. And I too would like to say thank you, our clerk Konecki.
Thank you.
And most people do not have any idea how much time and work she puts in. She puts in more work than most of the trustees do, so.
Exactly.
Trying to get all these minutes down right. Everything that we do, she has to sign and put a village seal on it, takes a tremendous amount of time. So thank you, clerk Konecki.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The most important thing is she makes us not swear.
Especially in executive session. The next one is the proclamation recognizing historical preservation month and presentation of historical preservation award. Whereas, yes, preservation matters is the theme of the National Preservation Month, co-sponsored by the Villa Park Historical Preservation Commission and the built of Villa Park that celebrates and honors the past while looking toward the future. And whereas the Village of Villa Park recognizes and is proud to have two national registered properties, nearly 80 buildings that have been historically recognized, and two locally designated historical landmark business districts. Whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by individuals who preserve the heritage that has shaped our village and us as people. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool to revitalize neighborhoods, fostering local pride, maintaining community character, managing growth, and sustaining development while enhancing livability. And whereas historical preservation encourages community reinvestment, saving resources and promoting socially and culturally rich communities. I therefore, Albert Volpus, village president of Villa Park, proclaim May 29th as Historic Preservation Month and call upon the people of Villa Park to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation. And with that, we have Carol Marcus here from the Historic Preservation Commission, and she has an award for a preserved home in Villa Park.
Thank you very much. This is a fun time of year for me. It's all across America. We're celebrating our architecture in Villa Park. We really have beautiful homes throughout the whole neighborhood. I'm going to make some comments on the home that we're packing. It's really special to me because I'm too old to be a baby boomer, I'm a war baby. And this home was built in 1947, and was built, this home and other homes by the contractor was built because of returning GIs from World War II. You've got to remember, Villa Park is rich history, well, the GIs were coming back. They had no jobs, no housing, because all the house contractors were told for the war effort. And they moved in with their mother-in-laws, their mothers, brothers and sisters, things were really cramped. So that's kind of one of our peak building periods in Villa Park, the third after the war, this peak thing, you know, hopefully we come down on that, but it's really nice. And as a quick example, there's probably about 40 homes built by the same contractor, all of them different. It's not your cookie cutter type of house, it's a very modest brick home, sturdy, right? Very sturdy, and it's really special to me. It's in the south side of Villa Park, and those of you who have a long time at Villa Park, anything past Madison Street was only sprinkled a little bit with houses. Beyond that, there were still farms, there wasn't anything south of Jackson Street, except more farms and other things, Woolbrook wasn't there. So these homes were exciting, they were brick homes and large lots, fifty foot, it's a large lot in the 40s, and gene blocks too. So people from the city were really flocking to Villa Park, especially to have a brick home, waterproof home, and things like that. So it's been great. So the subdivision is called Robertson's Madison Street Ardenmore. So, and they were, it's kind of hard to do research on here because they divided into big lots, acre lots, you know, they wanted to have country homes and things like that. And then they start selling like crazy, like, hey, we can make more money if we just, you know, make it to smaller. So doing research, you have to do a lot of digging at the county in order to find particular information. Having said that, I'd like to bring up John and Angela, who live on South Summit Avenue, present them with this very special Horace House, 1947.
Thank you.
And a certificate, and money. I just want to say the present owners are commended for their sensitive preservation and make this an important structure that links the past to the future of Villa Park. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And it's, like I say, was a modest home, history, bedrooms, dining room, living room, everything you could possibly need, and they raised three lovely girls there.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carol? Carol?
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
This will be a museum. Also, what we're doing this month, I'm going to be dumping flyers at the train station. I've done downtown, we've got four people in from outside from Villa Park, it's a walking tour. They're a lot of good things because of age, community, and once again, to Villa Park, they just love it. They love Moore's, they love Angie's Business site in there, and they love the museums, they love the currie path. So I'm always promoting every time I can get with that. So I just want to thank the board, the manager, everybody I can, everybody, the police, everybody, because it takes a town to help one another, and I get a lot of help at the museum. And this board is really good for preservation. We've got wonderful refurbished Great Western Train Station, wonderful path there that brings a lot of people, we have concerts there, the museum, we have some improvements in our windows, which not appropriately replaced, you know, because it's historic. And the village hall is a very attractive building. And so I just want to thank you very much for supporting preservation. And people in this town love their houses, you know, they really do. You don't hear the stories. I'm at the museum all the time, and people come in and they want to know the history of their house, and who lived there, and all who lives in their house, and oh, let me know that house never goes for sale. I shouldn't go into the state because I could really sell Villa Park a lot. But I just want to tell the public too that the application for this historical plaque can be downloaded from the website. We've got a very nice, easy to use website, and you could download it. We take applications all year. Takes sometimes a little bit of time to do research, but sometimes it takes a lot, and we don't mind doing it. Also, I'm going to tell you about this passport program. May 1st, the passport is just what it says in the passport. She's somebody in the museums and nature center in DuPage and Kane County. Villa Park is a very popular spot because it has an open washroom, is our visitor's center, it's right on the currie path, you can't help but go in there and peek. The museum has five displays this year, and I put up a wedding dress last night, and I went by, there were the lights on, and I saw that the price was rising. I decided to change the arms because the wedding dress was like, stop for museums, we still have changes over here all the time. And we're fun people, chilling, and you can do research. We've got three volunteers that work there, and they're familiar with the archives that we have. We don't have, we're not the county, we don't have your genes, your titles, anything like that. We do have pictures of old houses, we have old home boots, and books that we can do reference, and a lot of the old town was there, we know everybody, you know. When you live in town a long time, you know the stories. And sometimes the stories can have a zip look, but sometimes they're fun stories, and I always hear a lot of things. So I'll stop at the museum. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's got to be a tough job to pick out houses that do all that research to help us.
Well, sometimes it's weekly. I used to get a free pass at the title company, but they moved out of Bloomington, Bloomingdale, and now they charge $250 to do the research. This one was a tough one. I spent a lot of time researching because they had, it was in the old, we had some long residents of the house a long time, so we had to go down in the basement for the big heavy black books, and that's just a nightmare. So three days, and three clerks at the county doing it, and they had to go lunch, and there's me looking through the records, and nothing's been ordered. So, you know, Joseana knows, she's a volunteer, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the gardeners. When I first saw the house on my agenda, I couldn't picture, but, you know, I went by there, I had to see which one it was, and it's so well-maintained, it looks great. So, very good, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 5C, which is Environmental Concerns Commission Green Champion Award presentation. I think Justin Shlenky is here from the commission. Let's go, Kay.
Good evening, looking for others. I'm Justin Shlenky, currently served as the chair of the Environmental Concerns Commission. So quick aside, great to see you here, please continue to support our local businesses. Additionally, trustee Anna Osson, I will try to minimize any swearing that might come out of my mouth. I'm here today to present the 2018 Green Champion Award to the local business for the private and contribute to environmental sustainability efforts. WashU Car Wash is relatively, is a relatively newer business to our community. Nevertheless, they have taken tremendous efforts and strides to cut down water waste and also conserve energy. It's a good business model to show that you can be hopefully profitable, which I imagine that they are, but also sustainable, not just financially, but also sustainable in an environmentally conscious way. As a quick plug, please attend the 2019 Spring Sweep, which is May 18th. It's going to be a village-wide recycling extravaganza and a paper shredding event. We are partnering with the Community Pride Commission as well. So, you know, please attend to that. And I'd like to now present the award to the partners or managers, owners of the business, present them with the 2018 Green Champion Award, and maybe just give them a couple minutes to introduce themselves to the board.
Sure. Today is birthday, right?
It is.
Okay.
Your birthday? No. Your birthday.
Tell us how that works.
My name is Michael Zerw. I'm WashU Car Wash, head of the Wash operations company. My name is Xavier Handis, I'm the general manager of the Villa Park Foundation.
Hi, Craig Nelson, I'm one of the partners of WashU Car Wash.
Hi, I'm Israel. I'm Steve Timmer, and just a real quick on yours, we won't take a bunch of your time, but we got into this thing almost six years ago to the month. We installed our first, that was the first, it was kind of the entire Midwest. Took a huge leap of faith on the water reclamation, went to a level that others had not gone to. And I guess it's kind of, poor cool is cool, we got in on it, and it grew with the results, and to be able to be here and, you know, receiving an award like this, we're extremely proud. And a thank you to many of the familiar faces that allowed us to come here, we're approaching our second year, and many of you were all here and voted us through. So thank you very, very much. We enjoy being here in Villa Park.
Thank you for being a part of our community. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move down to item 6A, which is bill listing for the week of April 15th, 2019, an amount of $90,786.73. And the minutes from the board being held on April 8th, 2019. We have a motion for the consent agenda. Trustee Iello?
Sure will.
Have a second. Trustee Case?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, we'll roll call votes please.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Iello? Present Volpus.
Yes. We'll move down to item number 7A, is the ordinance of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, approving a real estate sales contract for the purchase of 100 and 110 South Villa Avenue in the amount of $2.2 million. Man who can.
Thank you, hon. The board has agreed to sell the properties located at 100 and 110 South Villa Avenue to the village for $2,200,000. It is in the best interest of the village to purchase this site for additional parking for the South Villa Avenue business district. Existing property owner would relocate to 631 East Wildwood Avenue. Thank you, hon.
Thank you. Motion for the ordinance, trustee Kazoan?
President will make their motion.
Trustee Iello?
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I just want to, I just want to add, this was, this was in process for a couple of years, a lot of moving parts, a number of times do some rumors that went around town that almost fell apart a few times. So there's a lot of work and a lot of time taken by staff, and a lot of discussions by the board on this, and this finally has come to fruition. So hopefully sometime within not the immediate future, it'll be turned over for parking. We do have an agreement that the colonel would just stay there until his busy season is over. So, and so we had that, we had the AT&amp;T property, we didn't want to lose that, and we had contingency plans, if this didn't go through, that the village could use it, maybe A.K. Mulch could relocate somewhere else and some village-owned property. So there was a lot, a lot going on, it was very confusing for some time. And last Wednesday, I think it was, we finally got the final agreement done about quarter to five, after a lot of phone calls back and forth with everybody's attorneys. So with that, there's no other questions, we'll have the roll call vote.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Iello?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
President Volpus?
Yes.
I want to go back to that question for a minute.
Okay, we already voted.
I will say, I, just to let people know, they asked the question, the renters on that property, we know this, Angie asked that question, there's a couple renters on the property as of the moment, they still have contracts, so they will still be businesses there, along with us developing for parking. So you did ask that question, I wanted to make sure that was addressed.
Yes. Full leases. Full leases, which we assumed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, 7B is the ordinance of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois.
You missed 6B, the minutes to that.
No, you know, we did it all together with the, yeah, it was all in consent agenda, but I did read the minutes. 7B is the ordinance of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, authorizing the sale of, by public auction, of served plus vehicles owned by the Village of Villa Park. Man who can.
Thank you, hon. Trustees from the sale of the vehicles will be placed into the equipment replacement fund, will be used to purchase additional equipment. And then there's a list on the website with the agenda, and I'll quickly, you're on board, read the list into record. The first item is a seized 2006 Chrysler Town and Country. This vehicle is totaled and will be junked at a junkyard for current rate. Number two is a seized 2005 Pontiac G6. Three is a seized 2000 Pontiac Grand Am. Number four is a seized 2009 Chevy Malibu. Number five is a seized 2010 Harley Davidson Road King. Number six is number seven, PW, 1997 Ford F-450. Number seven is a number 258 Parks vehicle, it's a 1999 Ford F-250. Number eight is a PW vehicle number 11, it's a 97 Ford F-350. Number nine is a PW vehicle number five, is a 2003 Ford Crown Rick. Number 10 is PW vehicle number 18, 2008 Ford Ranger. And number 11 is a Parks 1996 Tri-Wing Morn. Thank you, hon.
Do you have a motion for the ordinance on sale? Trustee Case?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Wagner? Okay. Any questions or comments? Saying none, roll call please.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Iello?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
President Volpus?
Yes. The next item is number 8A, which is a resolution of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, approving a contract with Aqua Contractors Corporation of Addison, Illinois, for construction of the Princeton Ave Improvement Project in amount not to exceed $915,000. Man who can.
Thank you, hon. The Princeton Ave Improvement Project is proposed in the Village of Villa Park's capital improvement plan. The scope of work of the project includes street improvements, combined sewer separation, partial water main replacement, and selective sanitary sewer repairs on North Princeton Avenue from Elm Street to the Union Pacific Railroad. The project has been awarded a community development block grant for partial funding for the construction of the combined sewer separation and the water main replacement. Aqua Contractors Corp. of Addison, Illinois submitted the lowest responsible bid for the project in the amount of $915,000. Staff recommends approval of a contract with Aqua Contractors Corp. of Addison, Illinois, for construction of this project in the amount not to exceed $915,000. Funds are budgeted for this expense in various accounts and street improvement, water supply, and wastewater funds account. Thank you, hon.
Do you have a motion for a resolution? Trustee Wagner?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? You have a second? Trustee Yello? I just want to point out that this was in the works for a while, this, we had done all the analyzing of all the streets in town. We hired a service, went through, and they checked the underlayment underneath of the sub-surface and the like. The sewer separation was recommended by the village board based on our comprehensive flood plan and stormwater system plan, the analysis. And the water main replacement was recommended by the Villa Park Master Plan, which we had in effect at this time. So, part of this funding would also be 65%, around $400,000 will be paid through a grant, which we've also received approval for. So, yes, Trustee Case?
I don't, Richard, is this the first time I've ever used these guys?
Yes.
It would be. Can I answer your question, Trustee Case? Yes, this would be the first time that Aqua Contractors worked for Villa Park.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable?
We checked the references.
Okay.
They came back terribly.
Okay.
The county has also approved them, and that's critical given that they have to sign up on Aqua for the grant funding.
Okay.
So, they've given a green light for them to proceed.
Where else have they worked?
We reached out to Derry, Elmhurst, as well, I believe, Woodbridge, the lower municipalities.
Okay. Good enough.
As always, you know, we, we put things out for a bit, a little bitter, and being a unit of government, we have to accept a little bit if the contractor meets the requirements. And we did have a little holdup with the county because they had okay it too because it's a grant money. But they, we were going to have this on the agenda a couple of weeks back, but we had to hold up until the county said it was okay, so.
The name didn't sound familiar, that's why I was asking.
Anyone else? Same number, roll call.
Other question? The sewer separation in that area, is that the Elm Street that is combined sewers yet?
I believe we have at least one, maybe two in that area that are still also combined.
There, okay.
Those are future projects.
We recommend you do so many a year, so. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
President Bultis?
Yes. Item 8P is a resolution of the Village of Villa Park to Page County, Illinois, approving an engineering service agreement with Engineering Enterprises Inc., Sugar Grove, Illinois, for Phase 3 construction engineering of the Princeton Ave Improvement Project in amount not to exceed $88,798. Andrew Keener.
Thank you, Andrew. Engineering Enterprises submitted a proposal to the village to provide Phase 3 construction engineering services, street and utility improvements, for the Princeton Ave Improvement Project. This resolution approves a contract with Engineering Enterprises for Phase 3 construction services in an amount not to exceed $88,798, which will be taken from the street improvement, water, and wastewater fund account. Thank you, Andrew.
Do you have a motion for a resolution? Trustee Kazoan?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Same number, roll call vote.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
I have a question. A simple question, can these two contractors work at the same time?
Yes.
It's, it can be a joint type?
Yeah, they oversee the project.
So, because there's two different sections of this, they can work at the same time?
And we have the contractor, which we already voted on, to do the work. This is the company that's going to make sure they do it right based on specs.
So, one's overseeing the other?
That's right.
Okay. Yes.
Andrew, just, trustee Case?
Yes.
Present.
Yes. Item 7C is a resolution of the Village of Villa Park to Page County, Illinois, approving an engineering service agreement with Baxter Woodman Inc. for Phase 2 design engineering for the Yale Ave Improvement Project, Plymouth to Ridge, in the amount not to exceed $86,300. Andrew Keener.
Thank you, Andrew. The Yale Ave Improvement Project is proposed in the village's capital improvement plan. The scope of work for the project includes street and water main improvements on North Yale Ave from Plymouth Street to Ridge Road. The project has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant for the construction of the water main improvements. Engineering design of the project is budgeted in the calendar year 2019, and staff would like to proceed with these design efforts. Approval of an engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman Inc. of Crystal Lake, Illinois, for Phase 2 design engineering of this project in an amount not to exceed $86,300 is recommended. Funding for these engineering services would be taken from street improvement fund referendum account number 650203292 and water supply fund account number 8250202292. Thank you, Andrew.
Do you have a motion for a resolution? Trustee Wagner?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second? Trustee Kazoan?
I'll second it.
Okay. I just want to add again that this is part of our pavement reconstruction that was recommended by the evaluation of our pavement that we did in 2013, and the water main replacement is recommended by the village's water master, water repair master plan, so. Any other questions? Trustee Ayello?
I was wondering, was it 8C, correct?
8C.
I was in perfect mix.
Did I say something wrong?
No, I was, I heard it wrong. I wanted to make sure the record was accurate.
Okay.
But I heard it wrong.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Yes, Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
President Bultis?
Yes. 8D is a resolution of the Village of Villa Park to Page County, Illinois, authorizing the budgeted purchase of playground equipment for the Willbrook Park in the amount not to exceed $69,999. Andrew Keener.
Thank you, Andrew. Willbrook play, playground, Willbrook Park playground must be removed as part of the Jackson Pond Improvement Project. The current playground has been in use since 2000 and is over 19 years old. Plans from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan call for replacement of the playground, and this purchase is the first step in the park renovation process. With the support of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, who unanimously supported the playground's replacement, it is recommended that the playground equipment be purchased from T-Rail of Union, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $69,999. This purchase is budgeted in the NESR account number 3450202299. Thank you, Andrew.
Do you have a motion for a resolution? Trustee Wagner?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second? Trustee Yello?
Second.
Again, this is from our Parks Recreation Master Plan, which the board voted on, we adopted in 2018, in 2015, so. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Wagner?
Um, I looked at, no, I read the memo. Where's, how far is the park being relocated from its current location?
Because everybody knows that area is under construction here for the overflow from the pond, so some of that equipment there is going to be repurposed.
It'll be on the west side of the sidewalk, just away from the trees and away from the houses, just south of the houses. There's an open space that'll fit nicely.
And just one more question, do we know how much usage that, that park gets in relation to other parks?
Um, we don't have, you know, an active count.
Okay.
We do, I, I've had some comments from the area residents, one being a parent with special needs, and he, him and his buddies use the park quite often, and we've had some, some different equipment going in, so it's, it's there again.
Okay. That's all, and thank you.
Did I read that right? It's going to have a zip line?
Yes.
All right.
I decided to do something a little different.
Yeah. Any other questions?
How much acreage is it taking? How much spot is it taking? Because it looks, from the drawing, looks like it's a lot. So, how much square footage are we actually putting together?
Round space is 46 by 63, but we'll have it bigger than that. I mean, that's not the space I would mention for the playground.
And are we putting a border in?
Yes.
This will have a border, correct, around the space?
Anything else, Trustee?
I just wonder why we didn't just make it a nice 70,000.
I thought the grid was.
And we have to go with that bit. It's just curious why you didn't round it to just a nice.
Give us quite a few discounts.
Okay.
Just in the way it was done.
Anyone else? Same number, roll call.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
President Bultis?
Yes. 8E is a resolution of the Village of Villa Park to Page County, Illinois, establishing the fees for the village's swimming pool in 2019. Andrew Keener.
Thank you. Pool pass rates must be finalized by a resolution and approved by the Board of Trustees. It is recommended with support of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission that there be no fee increase for the 2019 swim season. The recommended rates are as follows. The early bird rates would be May 1st through June 21st. Residents age 3 to 59 would be $53. There are no non-resident early bird rates. Residents senior age 60-plus would be $48. The regular season rates beginning June 22nd would be residents ages 3 to 59 would be $72. Non-resident ages 3 to 59 would be $99. Residents senior age 60-plus, $64. Non-resident age 60-plus, $92. The daily admission fees are recommended to be $7 for residents ages 3 and older and $9 for non-residents ages 3 and older. The evening discount fee will be $5 for residents and $7 for non-residents beginning at 5:00 P.M. The daily admission rates recommended for 2019 are the same as they were in 2018. These fees are comparable with neighboring communities with similar aquatic facilities. Thank you, Andrew.
Do you have a motion for the resolution? Trustee Yello?
Sure will.
You have a second? Trustee Tucker? Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Tucker?
I just want them to get an opportunity that they, the reason why we extended it to the 21st, June 21st, that was something that was an issue with the advisory board, and I think everybody should know what their.
Yes, normally the early bird ends, normally the first or second weekend in June. The Park and Recreation Advisory Commission asked that we extend it to the first day of summer to give residents a little bit more time to accommodate and get that discount rate.
That's with something to do with the school?
Well, District 48 was, is under construction, or was under construction, so they started later, and their kids are in school a couple of weeks into June, so they will not get to use the pool to its fullest capacity while they're still in school. So, that, that was the other reason.
Thank you. Yes, that was.
Anything, anybody else? Same number, roll call.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
President Bultis?
Yes. Item 8F was a resolution of the Village of Villa Park to Page County, Illinois, approving the village manager's employment contract. Do you have a motion for the resolution? Trustee Kazoan?
President, I'll make that motion.
You have a second? Trustee Yello? Any questions or comments from the board? Same number, roll call.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
No.
Trustee Ayello?
No.
Trustee Kazoan?
Yes.
Trustee Salala?
Yes.
President Bultis?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to item 9, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Is anyone signed up?
I have somebody, yes. We have the non-agenda, Joe O'Leary, looking at the metro station.
Hi, good evening, I'm Joe O'Leary, I'm a drill night at Smeatville Street, opened Villa Park since 1989. This issue is for pedestrian underpass at the Villa Park Metro Station. I'm a member of the Page Rail Safety Council. Its members meet monthly and comprise concerned citizens, governmental, labor, industry, and regulatory officials, and volunteer their time and effort to eliminate railway-related fatalities. Today, I sent an email to Lisa Stark, the Union Pacific Government Affairs Officer, to inform her of this issue. Union Pacific owns the tracks there, and it's heavily used throughout, so nothing can be done without their guidance. At body in McInnes, I work with the morning racer, my name is Joe O'Leary, and I'm now with the Page Rail Safety Council, a retired UP conductor and resident of Villa Park. There is a critical need of a pedestrian underpass at the Villa Park Metro Station. Villa Park was not included in stations receiving funding for an underpass when Metro's West Lane Improvement Project was developed and implemented years ago. Passengers and pedestrians are increasingly put at risk now that freight trains are built longer, hand waved, or stopped at the RMR Avenue cross. Funding sources cannot be developed unless costs are identified first. Federal, state, and other funding opportunities need UP's cooperation in establishing a baseline as to what UP will require to put in a pedestrian underpass on this heavily used ground. Budgets are not under consideration, and the process cannot begin without your help. Please call me, I gave you my phone number, respond by email, so that we may proceed with this vital project. Thank you for cooperation. Got extra copies for board members. Although I cannot officially speak for any of the involved parties, I will do whatever is possible to bring them together. I'll also invite all interested parties to join me at the next Page Rail Safety Council meeting, Saturday, May 18th, 2019, from 8:30 to 10:30, at Adventist Hospital in Hinsdale. We need a network of others who will help get this project completed. Understand that the 18th is also the environmental concerns, the cycling day, and they're very attentive to their schedule, meaning the schedule ends at 10:30, it ends at 10:30. So, can't make it that meeting, we would, we can get at the same location, always the Saturday, I think it'll be the Saturday of each month, so it'll be a June meeting. And if you just go on the website, brsc.org, you'll, you'll find out more complete information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for doing that, so. We'll hope for the best, so. Anyone else?
Yes, I have Kerry Wolf signed up.
My name is Terry Wolf. I'm here to speak about some of my FOIA requests recently, the responses from the village, and the way, the manner in which the village has been conducting business, which I feel is inappropriate. I prepared my statements to try to keep myself on track and to reclaim from making any derogatory comments, which I regret making in past meetings. On April 8th, 2019, after the board meeting, I submitted a FOIA request stating, please provide the bid advertisement and bid opening results for the Lufkin Pool demolition bid. please provide the bid advertisement and bid opening results for the Lufkin Pool demolition bid. After four days, on April twelfth, twenty nineteen, the village requested an extension of five days. My response was that I do not believe my request, and your reason for not supplying the requested information qualifies under limited reasons for a five-day extension per five Illinois C four-dash-the code. And I kindly request that the Village of Villa Park fulfill my request in the initial five days as required by law. They did comply. The next business day, the village fulfilled the FOIA request by indicating that no such records exist. Clearly, that was strange that they asked for a request for extension and then follow-up the very next day with an answer of no such records exist. The response was as such. The resolution as approved stated that whereas Section two dash two-twenty-A-three of the Villa Park Municipal Code provides an exemption from bidding requirements for contracts where the corporate authorities, by a two-thirds affirmative vote, waive the requirements of open and competitive bidding, I am shocked that the Village of Villa Park staff and elected officials think that foregoing an open and competitive bidding process is in the best interest of our taxpayers and our tax dollars. You are likely spending significant additional taxpayer dollars by doing this. President Voltes himself, at the April eighth, twenty nineteen, meeting, delivered somewhat of a so-called speech about poor financial position that the village is in. This is not responsible government. Further, in a memo dated February twenty, from Greg Gola to Rich Keener, sorry, February twenty, twenty eighteen, from Greg Gola to Rich Keener, it states, "Staff have received three bids for demolition and the lowest responsible bidder was submitted by American Demolition Corporation." Obviously, that was over a year ago, and we know that a new proposal was received. On April seventeenth, I submitted an additional FOIA request to follow-up on my original one. I requested that any and all correspondence, emails, text messages, or letters that were useful, relied upon, or related to the solicitation and acceptance of any and all proposals, bids, or quotes, tour from the Village of Villa Park staff, agents, trustees, or officials related to the Lufkin Pool demolition proposal be provided. On April nineteenth, twenty nineteen, I received a response from the village FOIA officer that my request was approved and the status of the FOIA request number was updated to a full release. I was told that the memo discussion, the demolition of Lufkin Pool from Director Gola is available on the website. I was provided a link and told that, in fact, the documents presented to the board are also found at the link above. This will provide all records that were cited or identified during the board meeting held on February twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. I'm not sure what that had to do with my request, and I'm quite certain that that senior document did not cover and encompass everything I asked for in that request. Fortunately, as your response states, I have sixty days to follow-up with the Public Access Council at the Attorney General's Office. Also, on April seventeenth, twenty nineteen, I submitted a FOIA to please provide meeting minutes that indicate who, in, or when, what authorization was given by the Board of Trustees per Section two dash two-twenty-A-three of the Villa Park Municipal Code, which provides the exemption from bidding requirements for contracts where the corporate authorities, by a two-thirds affirmative vote, waive the requirements of open and competitive bidding for the Lufkin Pool proposal. I received a response and told that no such record exists because the April eighth, twenty nineteen, meeting minutes haven't been approved yet. So I looked earlier. I didn't see the minutes posted. I may have missed that. I was surprised I didn't even see it was listed as minutes for approval tonight, so I'm glad that those minutes were approved, and I'll certainly have to look at those later. But what struck me in all the aforementioned information was, first, a serious lack of consistency and transparency in how the village conducts business. Sometimes you request a quote for demolition, or who knows what else you might get, just a seventy-seven thousand dollar proposal for, and you just approve it. How do you know that's the best price? How do you know you're doing well with the taxpayer dollars? You don't have any clue if that same work could be done for fifty thousand dollars. You don't know that because you haven't gone through an open and competitive bidding process. You're wasting our tax dollars. I'm sure that you've seen an open bid. Sometimes the bids, and probably some of the ones that we looked at tonight, can range several hundred thousand dollars in any direction. What would lead you to believe that this would be any difference? So again, I just don't think that there's being open, clear evidence of good government here. Secondly, I think the village has clearly provided me documentation that there was not an open and competitive bidding process for the Lufkin Pool bid, even though the resolution that was read aloud on April eighth, at the April eighth, twenty nineteen, meeting falsely indicated that three proposals were solicited. Even if they were, it still wouldn't be open and competitive bidding, that would just be three proposals. On the opening of the resolution for the vote of four to three that happened in the demolition of, or the resolution to approve the Lufkin Pool bid, but I'll point out that that four-to-three vote is not enough because that's not two-thirds of the corporate authorities. So I don't know how that was a binding vote. You didn't have a selective bidding process. You didn't have a competitive bidding process, which meant you had to hand the two-thirds vote of the board to approve it. You didn't get the two-thirds vote because it was three to seven, which is fifty-seven percent, less than the sixty-six percent. So I question how that vote was bound and how that demolition contract could be executed. If you had something to the contrary, then I'd kindly ask that you provide it. However, then you failed with your requirement to comply with the Freedom of Information Act. So anyway, it'd be interesting to see the information. I want to state that I'm here as a taxpayer, and I'm here on behalf of all taxpayers, and even those who want to see Lufkin Pool demolished, because this is not a Lufkin Pool issue. I am not here for the Lufkin Pool, Save Lufkin Pool group. I am pleading with you to be good stewards of our tax dollars. Please require open and competitive bidding for all construction and demolition projects that exceed Manager Keener's twenty thousand dollar spending authority. Please proceed with your desired plans to demolish Lufkin Pool as planned, but please do so by first putting it out to competitive bids so that we can assure the residents of this community that you have it in their best interest and actually are concerned about the finances of our district and of our village, and put it out to competitive bid so that we know we're paying a fair price. Please do this for our community. Please be more open and transparent and responsible with our tax dollars. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have still one more. Wendy Gray-Raff. Now, you're agenda.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Save Lufkin Park Advocates Group to tell you our thoughts about the decision at that last board meeting to vote to demolish Lufkin Pool. Probably the last time I'll be addressing this forum. Firstly, you looked at the vote totals for the Rockland, and you concluded that the referendum didn't receive an adjourned because of the low support in the precincts that were north of St. Charles Road, where it received only thirty-two percent of support for the referendum. In the precincts south of St. Charles, they received fifty-three percent in the central area, and the southernmost precincts around the pool received fifty-nine percent support. So our feeling is you voted to demolish Lufkin Pool based on referendum results, whose results were determined by just one data point, that voters on the north side of the city overwhelmingly did not want to support a million-dollar tax increase to fix the pool. A million-dollar price tag, which we all know was way too much for the repairs that were needed. Secondly, I'd like to mention or respond from one of the comments by the trustees last week or two weeks ago at the April eighth meeting regarding our failure to fundraise. We had a very challenging time fundraising. First of all, demolition was hanging over our heads the entire time we were fundraising, which doesn't exactly instill confidence in donors. There were many residents who supported saving Lufkin Pool that told us the following reasons for them not contributing at that point in time. They thought the board was going to demolish the pool even if they did donate money. They thought the board did not use the money to fund pool repairs if they gave a donation, and they thought that the residents should not have to fund repairs if the village had the money to make repairs, which you did at that point in time prior to all your recent land acquisitions. Thirdly, you voted to demolish Lufkin Pool based on the referendum results... Oh, excuse me, wrong place. Regarding the fundraising. Then it became known in December of twenty eighteen that there should be a referendum that residents did not want to donate money, and they also betax via referendum to fix the pools. We also wanted to point out, using your data, that the operation of Lufkin Pool, in addition to Jefferson Pool, likely made money for the village when compared to the operating cost solely of Jefferson Pool. So you voted to demolish in a way that a good portion of the village used, they wanted, and that at the worst even broke, broke even in terms of operating profit or loss. Since the pools are such a drain to our city finances, and we've heard what dire straits we're in from the president regarding pensions in the near future, perhaps we should just cut our losses, as the term we used for Lufkin, and maybe we should just close Jefferson. It's a sixty-year-old pool. Why should we dump any more money into it? We're in such dire financial straits. Lastly, with regards to the demolition vote on April eighth, our organization believes that it was wrong of the board to move that demolition vote from June, which was originally agreed to. Many residents feel the board was broke, had broken their worth, and they find it more difficult to trust the board in the future. A big point was that the feasibility study was not completed by April eighth, and was one of the reasons the vote was going to be held in June, to get that input that was paid for with taxpayer dollars. Moving up the timing of the meeting and not allowing the new trustees to vote on this issue, that denies their voice and the voices of the people who elected them by a substantial majority. The trustees won a majority in every precinct in Villa Park. The residents want the new trustees to be their voice. Voting to demolish Lufkin Pool was a wrong decision by this board. Time will tell the long-term consequences to the board and to the village. We do not know that residents, we do know that residents will remember what happened with the Lufkin demolition, and it will have a long-term effect on Villa Park. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Anyone else?
Yes.
If you state your name again for the record.
Justin Shetinsky, four-six, Delman. Come to my attention that Elmhurst is currently taking under consideration a development project at the northwest corner of St. Charles and Route Eighty-three, currently in Crane and Burger Place, now closed, and Crane is now closed as well. It's my, further, it's my understanding that the proposed development plan is actually a sixteen-lane gas station on that corner, due to its proximity with Salt Creek and the fact that it could very well potentially have detrimental effects and event spillover into the Village of Villa Park, of the Commission, Environmental Concerns Commission, has discussed this as in the last meeting. We feel that it would be detrimental to the community at large to have the development project go through, even though we don't have any say as to what happens in the city of Elmhurst. My understanding is that Mr., sorry, Manager Keener attended the meeting recently and voiced his opposition, or was there a fact out there, but also voiced his opposition to that. So I thank you for your voice in that. We are opposed, as a commission, to any development project, whether it be a gas station or something that could have detrimental or viral effects to Salt Creek and the community. So thank you for representing our interests, and I hope that we will continue to receive updates from Manager Keener, by trustee Wagner, our liaison, for updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, manager did attend. I've been trying to get hold of the mayor of Elmhurst. He hasn't returned my calls, so. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the clerk's report.
There's no report tonight.
Trustee, you put a sir on the right, trustee Ayello?
I'd just like to remind everybody about Easter Sales Day at the R, which is located at eight-thirty, South Addison Road. This coming, excuse me, May fourth, we're having our sixteenth annual Run for the Kids Superhero Shuffle. It's a five-kick run walk. All ability skill levels are walking. You don't necessarily have to run, you can walk or wheelchair, whatever means of transportation you have. We're located, again, at eight-thirty, South Addison Avenue. There is a registration check-in at seven-thirty to eight-fifteen a.m. The race starts at nine a.m. After the race, there's first school food, kids' face-cream, live music, photo booth. There is some preregistrations available online. If not, same date registration is available.
That's all I have. Just take this on.
It's one thing, Community Pride Commission is meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. They'll appear in the offices over here. If anyone is interested in being on the Community Pride Commission, I was looking for commissioners.
Case?
Nothing tonight.
trustee Ayello?
Ayello?
Ayello.
This is the last time I get to do this, so. They have one thing. It's Dave Salala.
I can't just...
And Tyal Baltis.
Depends.
Unless, from the south side of South Island, it might be Baltis.
Depends where you're from.
That's all. That's nothing to report. Thanks. We'll ask it.
Trustee Tucker? I can say that one.
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Ayello?
Thank you, President Voltes. I just have a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to thank Carol Marcus for all the work that she does for the Preservation Commission. I got Whistlestop from the museum group, and just wonderful articles in there, and I thank you for what you do. Want to let folks know that the Garden Club of Villa Park will have a meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-third, at the Community Rec Building. They'll have a speaker on prairie plants in your landscape. Should be an interesting program. And then, I mentioned before, the Garden Club Annual Plant Sale is scheduled for May third and fourth, from eight a.m. to three p.m., and the new location will be the pavilion adjacent to the museum. Also, wanted to mention that the, this coming weekend, will be the Prairie Path Cleanup conducted by the Village Pride Commission. It'll be the Saturday from nine a.m. to noon. And as mentioned before, Village Pride and Environmental Concerns are partnering on the spring cleanup. That will be April eighteenth from nine a.m. to noon along Home Avenue. And as mentioned before, lots of items that will be collected, paper shredding, electronics collection, along with many, many other items. And lastly, I wanted to mention that the Villa Park Junior Women's Club will be holding their major fundraiser, their annual spring fundraiser, on Saturday, May fourth, and this will be held at Tomito's Saloon, and I think that goes from six p.m. until whenever. So, and this is how they fund their scholarships for Willabook students. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna make an add. I left the trustees do most of the announcements. So, Manager Keener, do you have a report?
Honors, I have one item. I'm sure folks in the audience and at home are probably seeing NICOR throughout our community. So, NICOR right now has an improvement initiative called Investing in Illinois. And in twenty nineteen, NICOR expects to replace approximately one hundred and thirty-five miles of natural gas main and more than fifteen thousand natural gas service lines. So if you need, if you'd like some information, you can go on the web, and it's nicorgas.com backslash Working Your Neighborhood. But, so spring and summer, they'll be in all of our neighborhoods, and they've really started in Argmore and some other areas as well. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. With that, anything, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Are you saying? trustee Ayello, do it a second. Trustee Kazan? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, we're adjourned, and we'll be here on Monday, May sixth, at seven o'clock with the different...